Our agenda is a determination of quorum, which we have. And then we also have an announcement that Mr. Blomley would like to make to the public.
Yes, so, good evening Chair Halliburton and members of the Planning Commission. Just wanted to make somewhat of a public service announcement to all of our past, current, and future applicants. There have been, and I don't think this is unique to our department, there's been a scam perpetrated on our applicants over the last year or two, and we're trying to get the word out. What happens is that scammers take the publicly available information from the agenda and assuming, use AI to create a very, very real-looking email and sounding email requesting payment. And I think, since they started, we've been redacting the email addresses from any kind of items that went in the Planning Commission agenda, but even that is not enough. They're finding email addresses and sending them to our applicants anyway. Apparently, according to our IT department, that's relatively easy for them to do, to find email addresses. Our resident IT guy is nodding in agreement with that. But, so what we want to do is, and what we're trying to do is to do kind of a public service campaign, help get word out that if people get an email requesting an invoice, other than the fees that are required to be paid, that are on our fee schedule, that come into our office through cash or check, because that's the only way, at the current time, that we take payment, is cash or check. The emails request that the money be wired to them. We will never ask for money to be wired. And also, the emails generally don't have the same domain name as our email addresses, which is murfreesboro.tn.gov. The scam emails have been coming in with like murfreesboro.usa.org or something like that, or usa.com. So they're trying to spoof, they're trying to imitate us, but those emails are not coming from us, and if there is any question by an applicant whether an email is legitimate, please don't pay it. Never wire money to one of the scammers. Call us, and we'll let you know if that charge is legitimate. And so, by all means, take the necessary precautions, and for our applicants, please be aware that those scams are happening right now.
Thank you, Matthew. Next item on our agenda, anyone, Carolyn, sign up for public comments?
No comments.
Okay. All right. Next item is approving the minutes of the October 15, 25 Planning Commission regular meeting and the October 15 Planning Commission City Council Joint Conceptual Workshop Meeting. Any additions or corrections of those minutes?
Move for approval.
Go ahead.
Vice Chair, Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye. Next item on our agenda is the public hearings and recommendations to council. For folks that are here to speak at the public hearing, we will give each of you three minutes to make your comments associated with the application in question. If you are here representing a particular neighborhood, we'll allow you five minutes. If you will direct all your questions to the Planning Commission. At the end of the public hearing, we will address all of those questions at one point in time. We're not going to necessarily respond to questions as you're asking. We'll write those questions down and respond at the end of the public hearing on that particular application. That being said, the first public hearing is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 32.1 acres located along Old Salem Road. Sheri Wade Metzler is the applicant. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you Chair Halliburton, and good evening Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The first item on the docket for you tonight is the annexation of one parcel with an abandoned single-family detached home located on the north side of Old Salem Road, just west of Veterans Parkway. The annexation, in addition to that parcel, also includes approximately 3,000 square feet of Old Salem Road right-of-way, which was reviewed and the annexation was consented to by the Rutherford County Highway Commission on September 2 of this year. So accompanying this annexation and plan of service request is a rezoning, to rezone the subject parcel to PRD. That was formerly known as the Old Salem PRD. It's now going to be referred to as the Aubrey PRD, which would contemplate the development of the almost 28 acres with 62 single-family homes, single-family detached homes, and 32 single-family attached homes. The annexation area is within the city of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. It is contiguous to the existing city limits along this area. It is also contiguous to an item that is under consideration for annexation just to the east, that this body recommended approval of on September 3. This parcel is also within the city's service infill line, which is mentioned in our comprehensive plan in the future land use section. So staff has been working with the other city departments to draft a plan of services. That has been included in the packet for your review. Due to its close proximity to the existing city limits, it's relatively easy to serve with one exception, and that is sanitary sewer. The developer will need to work with neighboring properties to the south and southeast to provide sewer to this property. And there's no time line for that extension, and any extension will be at the cost of the developer. Staff is supportive of the annexation request for the following reasons. The subject property is contiguous to the existing city limits. It is located within the city's urban growth boundary and service infill line, and services can be extended to the subject property upon request. Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and formulate a recommendation for city council. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and Mr. Brian Grover is here representing the applicant as well.
Any questions for Mr. Donovan at this point in time? Hearing none. Mr. Grover, do you have a presentation at this point, or no?
Zoning.
I'm sorry?
At the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
And Chair Halliburton, I did want to mention, just for the folks who are here to speak, that there will be two separate public hearings, one for the annexation of the property. So the public hearing that we're about to have is for the annexation only. In other words, taking it into the city's jurisdiction and the zoning, which will be related to the proposed development of the property, will be the next public hearing after this one, just for clarification purposes.
All right. With that said, anyone would like to speak for or against the annexation petition?
Against.
Please come up to the podium and state your name, your address, and any comments that you might have.
Okay. I don't have questions prepared to, well, I have questions, but I don't have-
Okay, can we get your name for the record and your address?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thomas Bruff.
Okay.
3036 Berry Pass Trail, Rockvale.
All right, thank you.
And I've been asked by my neighborhood to talk with y'all this evening. Neighborhood is just off of Windrow Road, Blackberry Cove. There's other neighborhoods that I know are here to probably speak as well. So there's four things that we've been very concerned with, has been the public safety of the roads and the configuration that's off of Veterans Parkway. The gentleman on the map here, the configuration of Oh New Salem, trying to cross over Veterans from one direction to the next, from Windrow. If anybody's ever attempted to get off at Windrow, onto Veterans from either direction. Since the Rucker Road was connected in with Veterans, if any of y'all have ever tried to cross over that area, it is very complicated and it's very dangerous. I've seen multiple accidents, school buses being held up. So there's a big concern about the safety of the roads, that configuration. Don't know how, anyone is very familiar with the property itself, but when it rains, and it rains, it floods, and it goes over onto Oh Salem Road and Windrow Road, it's like a swamp. And then the other concern that we've discussed has been issues with overcrowding of schools, that many residents being in that confined area. Where are they going to go to school at? Where do they go to school? And the other question is, the way this is drawn out, it appears to look like a flag versus being a continuous annexation proposal. I don't know the answer to, I guess a legal answer to, why is this not continuous and it just appears to be a flag, a strip that goes down Oh Salem Road? I don't know if someone here can answer that, or-
Yes, sir. We'll definitely answer those questions at the end of the public hearing.
Okay, all right. And just the question of, has there been any studies, research studies for public safety with this development? Especially the road, they're so close together. Has there been any studies on the land for wetland study, flood plains, environmental After the call, I'll get you. Okay. And then, the water that's flooding the area, it continues to go down Windrow Road and over, back behind our subdivision, and then even over onto Oh Salem Road. Water is a big concern, the road construction again, and schools. That was about everything that's been discussed in my neighborhood. We mentioned the schools, we had discussion that we believe that the city of Murfreesboro has over 10,000 students now, and the county, Rutherford County, has over 52,000. It's a lot. We see it, it's a lot. And I don't know where these people are going to go to school at.
We will-
Assuming they all have children.
Yeah, we'll address those questions.
But we are definitely, and everybody wasn't able to be here, we're definitely against this, and I hope that y'all will give the consideration, either no, or give a consideration, and these be tabled until there's more studies and more research done. And one element to this, the gentleman here circled, Middle Tennessee Electric and Consolidated Utility has spent a lot of money right at the edge of that property on that substation. And just the construction and the traffic flow around that area, it continues to get worse in a development like this. It's dangerous, it's very dangerous. I know everybody can't answer, but if you've ever crossed over Veterans Parkway, either of the morning or later in the afternoon, like me coming here today, it's not easy. It is very tight, very dense, those roads, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bruff.
And some other people-
Yes, sir.
-want to speak also, but-
We'll address those questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak for or against this application? Come on up.
Name's Chris Smith, I'm at 4419 Windrow Road. To piggyback off what that gentleman was talking about, my main concern, be the flooding in the area. I don't know how much time the developer, the purchaser of that property has spent in the area. I've spent a lifetime in that area and am well aware of the water runoff. There's wetlands all around. My yard has been greatly affected by it. I have two acres right there, and the original owner of the house made provisions on our property to handle water, and it's already out of control. Those five houses that go down Windrow Road to the left, mine is the last largest parcel there, and we have already had to put sump pumps in underneath every one of those houses to handle the runoff. You build a development in there, it's only going to make it worse. That's a low-lying area, they're going to have to build it up. They build it up, where's that water going to go? It's going to come down in my basement, that's where it's going to go. Simple answer there. Again, traffic concerns, school concerns, there's a number of things that we could go on and on about, but the main issue for the neighbors of this development is going to be water. And it's, there's been no, obviously there's been no geographical land surveys done, if they would, how they've been aware of this. We can, again, we can go on and on about it, but that's going to be my main concern, is the water, for not only myself, but my neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We'll discuss that at the end of the public hearing. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this application? Please, come on up.
So I'm really here, I was-
Again, if you could name your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kenneth Jacobson. I live at 5174 Danbury Court in Rockvale.
Okay.
And before I proceed, I have a question, sir. I was unaware of this particular one. I am aware, and I'm here to speak to the next issue, but they seem to be connected. When would be most appropriate for me to speak?
You're at the podium now, go right ahead.
Okay. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to address the members of the Planning Commission. I've already identified myself. My residence is located about one to one and a half miles away from the site being discussed. I represent about one dozen members of the Salem Downs community, which is off of North Walter Leathers and Danbury Court. I'm a retired military veteran who has moved around a lot. My current home is my 28th lifetime residence. I've lived there now for 16 years. There are many things I enjoy about neighboring Murfreesboro. The convenience of the markets, the restaurants, the shopping centers, movie theaters, much more. Whenever my wife and I leave the house, we're usually headed into Murfreesboro for something we need to get or want to do. But we live in Rockvale for a reason. Rockvale is our retreat. It's our sanctuary from the nearby congestion and bustle of Murfreesboro. We cherish the privacy, serenity, more open spaces, and natural beauty of Rockvale. We greatly enjoy seeing and feeding some of the wildlife in our large backyard. And speaking to that, this patch of woods right here is inhabited by a herd of deer. I appreciate that many other people prefer the lifestyle and conveniences made more available in Murfreesboro. I respect their preferences, I wish for them to have the lifestyle they prefer. I also wish for them and the members of the Planning Commission to respect the preferences of their Rockvale neighbors who choose to live in a more open, natural, rural environment. We do not view the urbanization of Rockvale, and certainly not the annexation and rezoning of Rockvale land into Murfreesboro to create high-density housing as any form of developmental progress. The citizens of my Rockville community don't want their farmland, open natural spaces, wildlife habitat, and quiet private living to be replaced with high-density housing, additional roadways and traffic, which are hazardous. I've been in a couple of near misses in the area being talked about, and other infrastructure expansion that will accompany them. While the builder may pay the initial cost to establish infrastructure necessary for new development, taxpayers bear the long-term cost to maintain them. What's being proposed is not just new residential construction in Rockvale, which is already proceeding at a steady pace. What's being proposed is the annexation and rezoning of Rockvale land into Murfreesboro for the purpose of more fully transforming our cherished rural environment into something we don't want. There are sufficient residents in Rockvale who share my concerns about the annexation and rezoning of Rockvale land, that some have formed their own Facebook group called Keep Rockvale Country. Since obtaining details of the proposed annexation, I've created an online petition to oppose the annexation and rezoning initiative. I got a light start on that. It went online at about noon yesterday. As of 5:25, when I walked in the door, it has 105 signatures on it. Four, no. Of those 105, 80 of them occurred in the preceding four hours.
Mr. Jacobson, we're almost at our five minutes. If we could wrap it up, that'd be great.
Although the petition has only existed for 30 hours, it has 105 signatures, that I'm aware. No person who has considered it has declined to sign. Please disapprove this motion for annexing and rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Anyone else would like to speak for or against the annexation application? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll address some of these questions. So-
Do you want to address them after the developer gives his presentation?
That would, but are you going to give your present? You said you were going to do it at the time of the next public hearing, but do you want to do it now?
Are you going to be committed for the, not the annexation, but the rezoning?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That'll be the next.
Good evening Chairman Halliburton and members of Planning Commission. I'm Brian Grover from SEC. With me tonight is Jackson Nichols of Patterson Company, as well as Rob Mulchran, SEC representative. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity tonight to present to you our project. The project is located just west of Veterans Parkway between Windrow Road and Old Salem Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Normally, we would give a presentation first on the zoning, so that we can have, give you the background on the zoning prior to the applicant giving a presentation on the zoning.
Well, but we're still on annexation. I think our point, I think Mr. Halliburton's point was that we're hoping he answers some of the questions that people had. If it's better, we can ask Brian to sit down, we can vote on the annexation, move on to the zoning, is that what you-
That would be typically what we would do.
Okay. So I think we just explained to everyone that there's two public hearings tonight. It's the same project, one's just on annexation, one is on zoning. So if we want to, we already closed the public hearing on annexation, we can go ahead and vote on that, move on to zoning, and then let him present?
Well, I mean, we need to address the issues that were brought up associated with the annexation petition, so I guess we can go through those questions now. All right? Do you want me to address those questions?
Chair Halliburton, if you'd like, there was one question that was addressed, a pseudo-legal question about the annexation of Old Salem Road. I'd be happy to take that if you'd like.
Okay, go right ahead.
So the question was, what looks on this map like a flag where Old Salem Road is being annexed? The, I should make clear that this property is immediately contiguous to city limits, and so it's not technically a flag. But the reason, my understanding, and Mr. Blomley can correct me, my understanding for the rationale for annexing Old Salem Road in addition to this property is because Old Salem Road is within the city limits on either side of this section here, and so this is just bringing this portion of Old Salem Road within the city jurisdiction as well, so that the city can ensure that Old Salem Road is maintained to the standards that would be needed, and that will be maintained on either side of this portion of it.
So I think, so, first of all, with regards to the contiguity of the property to the existing city limits, if we can go to my screen. So you'll see at the very top, the right-of-way of Windrow Road is in the city limits, and so the property is contiguous with the existing city limits. The right-of-way of Old Salem Road, rather than having one small segment remaining that would be within the county's jurisdiction for upkeep, maintenance, and also for emergency services, we felt that it was appropriate to include that whole segment of the Old Salem Road right-of-way in the study area, to bring it all under one jurisdiction. Not to mention that any roadway access points from this development onto Old Salem Road, if we left that, if we left that right-of-way in the county, they would be coming to two jurisdictions for development review and approval. One for what's on the private property with us, and the roadway cut onto Old Salem Road with the county. And so I think that's, that's just not very customer-friendly to have them come into two jurisdictions for approvals.
So another comment was made about the public safety and specifically the roads in question. How do we, what would be our response to that?
So every project that comes in gets reviewed by our public infrastructure team. So they've taken a look at this. We'll see in the rezoning, access to this side in the PRD is going to be derived from Old Salem Road. There's not going to be access to Windrow Road. Windrow Road is also, this area here that is in the city is in the Merrimont PUD, and there are plans within that to realign to Rucker Lane. So while not an active project that's occurring now, there are plans that are approved for that realignment to take place.
Then another, two folks that spoke were addressing the drainage and flooding of the area.
So this property isn't in a FEMA flood plain, and I'll let the applicant speak in greater detail about this, but they have done an HD determination on it. You will see in the pattern book, some areas that are wetlands that they are preserving. And it's generally what you're seeing in the area that's treed on the aerial.
Okay. And then mentioning the overcrowding of schools, I know we talk about that a lot, but I think we need to at least respond to that question.
So every annexation that becomes, comes before this, the plan of services addresses that we send out and give the schools a chance to respond, and then add that response to our plan of services. What they've indicated from city schools is that they have the ability to serve the neighborhood, there wasn't any- There wasn't any concerns mentioned in the information we gathered. We also provide notification to the county along the way as well.
All right. And then questions regarding specifically wetlands and were there any environmental studies done associated with this application for annexation?
That would be the HD and the wetlands that they have identified and preserved in the PRD.
Okay. And so Mr. Grover is going to address that as part of his presentation at the next hearing? Okay. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Bromley, can you discuss, because we talk about this when there's Rockvale, Rockvale properties come in front of us for annexation, how the urban growth boundary is set up, how long it's been there? Because anything that's in that urban growth boundary has been planned to be in the city of Murfreesboro since the urban growth boundary was set up. My family owns a very large tract of property in Rockvale. We're right outside of the urban growth boundary, but it is, that's been in play for a long time. And so the, any properties inside that urban growth boundary have been set to be part of Murfreesboro at some point. Veterans Parkway is a very large Murfreesboro corridor road to help as that expansion grows. So it's not that we're out there trying to bring Rockvale properties in. People are buying Rockvale properties, asking for them to be annexed inside our urban growth boundary that's already been established.
Yes, sir. The Urban Growth Act was adopted by the state in the late 1990s, and around 2000, Rutherford County and all four of its municipalities adopted the urban growth plan. And if we can go to my screen, you'll see the blue line that runs across the Rockvale area here. That was adopted by county and all the municipalities. And what is inside of that urban growth boundary line is within the city's ability to annex, provided that it's contiguous and that we can provide services to it. And so the subject property in question is here. So you can see it's well within the city's urban growth boundary. And so, and that, like I said, that's been adopted for about 25 years. And so what is in that urban growth boundary is, has the potential to be annexed. Of course, property, according to state law, cannot be annexed unless we have the consent of the property owner, the written consent of the property owner, or there's a referendum. Now, we've never done annexation by referendum in the city, but our standard operating procedure is that we study annexation of property based on the written petition of the property owner as we have done, as we have done in this instance.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions on annexation?
Yeah. If there are no other questions...
Move for approval subject. All staff comments.
Mr. Halliburton, can I still ask a question?
You can do it in the next public hearing.
Okay. He didn't answer my question. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I think, I think, we'll explain. So we're going to vote right now on the annexation, and then the city will make a presentation. The developer will make a presentation going through the plans and everything, and the entrances and the exits, how they're going to handle stormwater. So we'll hear a long presentation from them. And then everyone can make questions and comments and come back up to the podium again. So not to make you do it all again, but I think the developer will answer a lot of questions, and then you guys can ask follow-up questions. So it works out. So this is just, you've made a motion on the annexation, right? Okay. There's a motion.
A second. We have a motion, a second.
Vice Chair Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. All right. As Jamie was mentioning, our next application is actually the zoning application for this property. Approximately 27.9 acres located along Old Salem Road to be rezoned. PRD simultaneous with annexation. Patterson Company LLC is the applicant. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. So this is the zoning for the approximately 28-acre parcel on Old Salem Road. First, we'll discuss adjacent land uses. It's primarily residential or utility uses around the subject property. Just to the north is the Merrimont PUD that I mentioned earlier, as well as a pump station that is owned by Consolidated Utility and an MTE substation. Also along the northern edges of this property are single-family residential within the unincorporated county that is zoned medium-density residential within the county. Just to the, what would be northeast of the property is a vacant piece of property that is owned by the city that is currently being contemplated for annexation, and this body has made their recommendation to council. And then to the south and west of these properties, or of this property, is additional RM-zoned land within the unincorporated county. Okay. Let me get to a layout. So as far as the, now Aubrey PRD, formerly the Old Salem PRD, and I apologize, I'll probably inadvertently call it Old Salem, since that's what I've been working on it for the past three months. Includes 66 detached single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. There is a typo that was brought to our attention. They have a 51-foot lot width minimum versus a 50, so there's a slight difference than what's in the staff report before you. As far as setbacks go for the single-family detached homes, there is one, an exception for the front setbacks of those homes, and that is to reduce from 25 feet to, or from 35 feet to 25 feet. This is when you're comparing it to the RSA zone, so you're seeing a 10-foot reduction in that front setback. There are also 32 attached single-family homes that are set up in a HPR. There are a couple associated exceptions with the setbacks to the attached single-family product, which, I apologize, which is, the attached single-family product is in the core of the development with the single-family detached being along the perimeters. So the two setbacks, or the two exceptions you're seeing there are both the front setbacks. One is the front setback for the structure, so where the structure would be fronting on would be from a 35-foot to 20-foot. Those are, when compared to the RSA type 2 zoning district, those are also rear-loaded with two-car garages. So there, the access and parking is going to be in the rear of those. And then the secondary front is also requesting an exception, reduced from 35 to 15-foot, and this would be along these sides, where that exception would be. So you're along, not along the primary frontage of those buildings. As far as architecture goes for both the single-family attached and detached homes, they're providing brick, stone, and fiber cement on all four sides. There is proposed to be a 24-inch water table. And let me pull up some of the architecture. So here's the architecture for the single-family detached with the brick, and you see some of the examples may exceed that 24-inch water table, but it does meet the brick and stone that they're committed to in the pattern book for the detached structures. And then the attached has the similar requirement of at least a 24-inch brick or stone water table, but all four sides are brick, stone, fiber, cement. And that water table extends to all four sides of the building. The kind of other key elements of the attached homes is there'll be one or two stories, have two-car rear-entry garages. Those garages will also carry an exception with them. They're proposing two garage, or two driveway parking spots, as well as two parking spots within that garage, which they've committed in the book to restricting that to just parking inside the garage to accommodate the four required spots. And those will be a minimum of 1,300 square foot. The detached homes will be similar, one to two stories, have front entries, have back patios, and then two-car front-entry garages. Let me get back to the layout. So as far as parking onsite, the single-family detached around the perimeter will have the four required spaces provided in the driveway. I've already mentioned the single-family attached will be rear-loaded along this alley. They'll provide two parking spots in the driveway, two parking spots in the garage, and those will be restricted to parking only. As far as parking that goes along with the amenities, there is a, three spaces there that's with a tot lot and a walking trail and fitness trail that is in a back area close to detention basin and providing some buffer into the north. They have also, also have approximately 10 spaces on the south side of the attached dwelling units, and that's where the mail kiosk is located. A change since the body saw this last includes the addition of 12 parking spaces that are on-street parking along the fronts of both of the single-family detached. There's 10 on one street, 12 on the other. There is an exception that goes along with that. Our public infrastructure group did not want those public, those parking spaces in the public right-of-way. So, and in response to that, the applicant has squeezed down the right-of-way there so that those parking spaces are on property that will be maintained by the HOA. And that language is reflected in the pattern book. So I've talked about some of the amenities. Additionally, there will be landscaping along Old Salem Road, where those houses are backing along that street, and then there's a type C buffer along the northern portion until you get back close to the detention pond, where there will be landscaping that is compliant with our design guidelines. As far as the future land use for this location, it calls, our land use map identifies it as suburban residential, which is looking at a density range of one to four units per acre. What the comprehensive plan recommends is RS-15, RS-12, RS-10, and PRD zoning, which the PRD zoning would allow for clustering development and permit smaller lot sizes, you know, similar to what you're seeing proposed in the RS, in the 6,000-square-foot lot minimum. As proposed, the Aubrey Old Salem PRD has a total density of 3.5 units per acre, so it is within that one to four dwelling units per acre that the future land use plan calls So while the future land use plan does allow for clustering, kind of one place that it is silent on is whether clustering includes attached, an attached housing product, which they're proposing here. And that's just not specifically called out as part of that clustering development. We would expect, you know, smaller lots with those clusters, but planning commission will need to determine whether that zoning request, in its view, is consistent with the suburban residential land use character. Staff is supportive of the rezoning request for the following reasons. The rezoning request is consistent with the density recommendations of the future land use designation for suburban residential by providing a net density of less than four units per acre. The proposed Old Salem Aubrey PRD is compatible with the surrounding residential uses, offering detached and attached single-family homes that provide a transition to the existing single-family residential in the area. And the PRD supports efficient use of underdeveloped land and provides a diverse mix of housing types and accommodating different household needs while contributing to orderly growth of the area. I'm happy to answer any questions the planning commission has for me. If not, I will turn it over to Mr. Grover for his presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Donovan? Thank you, sir.
I've served on this commission five years, and earlier I was reading it, and I was like, tot lot, is that an acronym? I've just never heard of that before. And then it just hit me, it was a tot lot. So, that's mine. I need more coffee today.
Good evening, Chairman Halliburton and members of the planning commission. I'm Brian Grover from SEC. With me tonight is Jackson Nicholson from Patterson Group, as well as Rob Mulchon, a representative from SEC. So I want to say thank you tonight for the opportunity to present our project to you tonight. The project is located just west of Veterans Parkway between Windrow Road and Old Salem. Currently, it is a vacant lot, and it's surrounded primarily by agricultural land or residential properties. The immediate surrounding area is primarily zoned RM within Rutherford County, with the Merrimott PUD inside city limits being zoned to the north. This annexation request would be taking it from RM into the city as a PRD or a planned residential district. When it comes to aligning with the future land use map, as Richard stated, the density does align. We do think that the product being offered within this PRD matches very well with the cluster guidelines given within that future land use plan, and aligns quite well with the surrounding area. Some existing photos onsite, this is just looking south from Windrow Road into the property. This is looking north into the property from Old Salem Road. As in this image here, you can kind of see in that back right corners where that area starts to get low, low, and you'll see on the plan there is some existing wetlands that are planned to be preserved. This is looking east down Old Salem Road and west down Old Salem Road is this intersection at Veterans Parkway that would be the most impacted by this development. The site's approximately 27 and a half acres or so. It is proposing 98 homes. 66 would be single-family detached, with 32 being attached in form of townhomes. The site is accessed via two entrances off of Old Salem Road. The single-family detached were kept primarily along the perimeter of the project or directly adjacent to the townhomes to help insulate that higher density to the core of the project. The townhomes would be serviced by a private alley, as they would be rear-loaded. An additional guest parking has been provided along the townhome block and as well as near the amenities. The open space for this site would consist of the detention areas, the program space including a playground or tot lot, the walking trail, as well as some fitness stations along that loop, and the existing wetlands that are to be preserved. There has been a hydrological determination report done on this property, and that is how those wetlands were determined. Some key development standards, we're going to go over, we won't go over all of them, but someone's going to highlight was that this development will not be sold in bulk, and that includes the attached and the detached products within this development. Home occupation would be allowed within this development. However, no home occupation would be allowed to receive clients onsite. Development will be managed by a third-party HOA. They will be in charge of maintaining the open spaces as well as the guest parking spaces. And the driveways will be a minimum of 16 feet wide. When it comes to the garage clear space dimensions, particularly for the townhomes, as Richard stated, we are asking for that exception to have those count towards the required parking for this development. The single-family detached lots, new, a minimum 51 feet wide with a typical lot depth of 120 and a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The architecture for these homes would be, consists primarily of the brick, maturing stone, cement, and siding. They would be one to two stories of 35 feet maximum height with a minimum of three bedrooms, and they would have those two-car front-entry garages. And as Richard stated, they would have that 24-inch water table around all four sides. Here's some example photos of those with some additional elevations in the pattern book. The single-family attached townhomes are centrally located to help insulate those from the surrounding properties. These would be sold via horizontal property regime. These would be approximately, or a minimum of 1,300 square feet and provide a minimum of two bedrooms and a maximum of three bedrooms. These would be one to two stories as well, with the same maximum height of 35 feet to help create consistency. help create consistency. These would be rear-loaded instead of front-loaded and would also emulate the same 24-inch water table on all four sides. And here's example of front elevation and a photo of what the rear elevations would look like. The internal roadways for this project are proposed. We do have the typical 42-foot right-of-way. We also have that modified 33-foot right-of-way in order to accommodate the on-street parking. As you can see in the light blue there, that is the private alley. When it comes to Old Salem Road improvement, this is on Murphysboro Plan for improvements, and this would be improved to a three-lane roadway. Here's an example of that 42-foot public right-of-way. In talking with staff, we are proposing this modified right-of-way to 33 feet to account for that on-street parking as well as help create a sense of place for this community, more of an urban feel to it. And with that request, some additional standards were proposed from staff, and we have included those in the book as well. The landscaping for this, I'm sorry, the amenities are proposed on the north side of the project, just north of the townhomes, and we've providing a playground, walking trail, which would have intermittent fitness stations. And there's some examples of what those could potentially look like as well. When it comes to the landscaping, on the north side, just on, adjacent to the open space, we are proposing a Type C landscape buffer to help mitigate any impact on surrounding properties as well as additional landscaping along Old Salem Road. If you guys have any questions, I would be happy to answer those now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Grover at this point?
Yeah, I have a question concerning the townhomes. The guest parking, can we pull that back up?
Mm-hmm.
On the townhomes, the guest parking amount?
Yeah, let me go to...
So it looks like you have 10 spaces, guest parking on one end?
On the southeast end, yes. Those would be perpendicular spaces to the right-of-way on there.
And that's supposed to be for this whole entire complex, for people to walk from one end to the other end as a guest?
There's six in the middle. Reggie, do you see that? There are still...
Six in the middle? I don't see, it's not marked.
It's hard. There's trees, they drew trees. It's weird.
Yeah, so there's, there's... Hey, Brian, can you pull up that sheet with the, with the blow-up of that area? Let me see if I got that in there. Because there's also the, the on-street parking, the parallel spaces as well.
Yeah, it is, it is kind of hard to see.
It doesn't reflect on this, on this drawing.
This is just a lot diagram, so it doesn't show the perpendicular ones, but there is additional parking in the front of all those townhomes as well. And that's what we're proposing with that 33-foot right-of-way, is you have your typical section, but then you have additional parking in front of all those townhomes.
And that's that private alley? That's how, that's the section for it?
So what you're seeing here is the right-of-way shown in blue is the 33. The private alley, that's going to be your typical, about 20-foot wide or so, private alley. Yes, but behind those...
The cable department could pull up my screen. I've got, I've got that area blown up, a little bit easier to see, I think.
Yeah, I think I just counted 38 guest parking for the townhomes, if you're including the alley.
So this, this middle section, just that initial drawing that you had up just didn't reflect it, I think.
So, so there are the, the internal guest parking spaces along the alley, have the guest parking spaces here at the southeast end, and then the parallel parking spaces on both sides. And of course, the, the units themselves would have driveways along the alley.
So this, this lighter yellow is the driveways?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here. All right, that answered my question.
Any other questions for Mr. Grover before we go to the public hearing?
You know I looked at the parking, Reggie. You know I studied.
Well, I was going to look at it.
Is there, is there any more detail you can go into about the mitigating the water, the runoff with the detention plan? That's a major concern.
Yeah, so any plan that gets submitted to City of Murphysboro has to go through engineering review. This project, even though in a conceptual stage, we do take a look at where water typically or might be onsite. So we do have proposed detention areas located on the northwest corner, and then some of these areas behind the homes to the wetlands. But these plans have to be submitted to staff, and these are done by an engineer and reviewed by the engineering staff at the City of Murphysboro. And if you want to go into more detail about your actual process for that, feel free.
Yeah, if, if there are questions about our, our engineering review and what we're looking for, our project engineer, Ms. Katie Knowles here, if you have questions about our process, we'd be happy to go over that with you.
Well, I mean, I think that would be good to do so with respects to the questions that have already been brought up.
Good evening, planning commission. So our requirements are basically as far as storm water quantity goes, that the development detain pre-development discharges to, detain any post-development to pre-development levels through the 100-year storm. So that's... So our requirements are that they detain through the 100-year storm so that any discharges from the site do not exceed pre-development levels.
So what you're saying is no more water should come on anybody else's adjacent property that's one that's coming on there now?
Yes, and it's at a... It's a flow rate, not necessarily a quantity, but...
So is that the reason for the three detention areas?
Yes. So there will be more water running off of the site, but they're holding it back to release it slowly at the same rate it was pre-development. If that makes sense.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions before we go to the open, the public hearing?
Not for me.
I think Mr. Donovan mentioned earlier about Windrow Road, the realignment with Rucker. Is there any timeline on that by chance at all? Nothing?
Not yet. It's, yeah.
I know he was saying it was on that developer on the north side as part of their project, but...
And that parcel is no longer owned by the original developer. So, and...
Since that realignment is tied to that Merrimott plan development, it would be development-driven at this time. We do see that site as a future signal location once, but I don't know the timetable on that either.
Once the alignment happens?
Yeah.
Yeah, but for purposes of this development, both the entrances are on Old Salem Road.
Correct. I was just curious.
It's only been a couple of years since Rucker's been realigned to that location, so it could be that if we're seeing a need at Rucker, they might move it up, but that would, that's another department and not my budget.
Is that portion of Veterans not right there? Is that state?
No. It's all city.
Okay.
So people will leave the neighborhood on Old Salem, get out on Old Salem, turn left to go to Veterans, be right there on Veterans.
All right. Any other questions before we go to the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone can come to lectern, speak for or against this project. Again, you'll limit your comments to three minutes and also address your questions to the planning commission, and we'll answer those questions at the end of the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Jay McCraw. I live at 2597 North Walter Leather's Drive. It's actually the corner of Windrow and North Walter Leather's. It's about a mile down Windrow. And I've lived there for over 30 years, so I travel this area multiple times a day. And first, let me say my position is I'm, I'm opposed to the rezoning. And the number-one issue has already been talked about a lot, and that is safety. That area, if you're not familiar with it, I mean, there's, Veterans has the intersection at Old Salem, less than a tenth of a mile is the intersection with Windrow, and then just slightly down is the intersection with Rucker. And that traffic is already a disaster today, and that's before any of this additional 100 residences get added into that area. I personally have witnessed accidents at all three of those intersections, and this is only going to get worse. And it's not just accidents, there could be fatalities. And it's, it's on this body to, to prevent that. And I've, I've heard the comments about the Merrimott PUD, but it sounds like that's not going to happen. The, the traffic in that area must be improved before those additional 100 units are added to that area. That's, that's my number-one concern. I had two other concerns. One was wetlands, and that's been answered. And then the third one was, was the zoning change or the actual zoning density, and it sounds like that is within, within the proper area, or within the proper density level. But it just seems to me like that, that type of project in that location is, is out of place. I don't know if that's spot zoning or what, but it just doesn't seem like that type of development fits in this area. And that's my comments. But I, I go back to the safety, that's the number-one issue that I see, and I think it certainly needs to be addressed before those residences are, are added.
Thank you, Mr. McCraw. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Mark Little. I live at 2302 North Walter Leather's. It is also just about a mile from the current location. I think most people that live in this area, we've, I've lived there for, quote-unquote, 17 years now, are not naive enough to know that the area's growing and there's going to be development there. So with it being annexed now, I would agree 100% that this is a very, very congested area. And we always hear all the time about, you know, the city and Northern County is very good about putting things out there and putting things, building up before they get the roads developed. I would just ask that the roads get developed, the signaling gets put up, the rerouting of Windrow, which is a horrible reallocation there. When I moved there, that road was straight before Veterans was there. Veterans came in, we understand that. But the, the, the infrastructure is not designed to handle really what we've got now. I agree with my neighbors here, there is always wrecks there. I have two young adult children now, and I've almost seen them get in an accident a couple of times myself. I've been involved in areas where people will put signals on, there's no lighting. It's just, it's just really, really congestion. So I would just ask that the county and the city both look at whatever, whoever's responsible for that, to getting that done before we allow a, a project like this to come in, knowing very well that we're going to have development out there. I mean, everybody knows when veterans come out there, that's a big development, so we know that it's coming. But please utilize your time now to get the infrastructure in before we put these type of housings in. And if we're going to put them in now, let's not rezone it so that it would be a higher density. Let's cut it back and, and put less homes in would be my, my ask until that can get done.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
I'm coming up, because I think a woman should come up. I am Kelly Hall. I'm on, also on North Walter Leather's Drive, and I want to just piggyback on what he's saying. This has been a beautiful example of what I would call gaslighting. We've seen beautiful pictures, but who are you, are you going to actually oversee this? Who oversees this? And I would agree, this is two, 6,000 square feet, that's a tenth of an acre. It's barely, barely undetached. It's, these are, these are zero lot lines. There are a lot of homes crammed in a tiny little space so that somebody makes a lot of money. Let's face it, that's what this is about. That's what growth is about. It's about money. But when someone loses a family member because the city didn't do what they needed to do for the roads, then it becomes personal. It is not about money for that person that loses that loved one because the city didn't do the roads. They didn't, oh, yeah, run, one day Windrow's going to match up to Rucker. No, it's not. You just, we just found that out. So we got beautifully gaslit on the front about how that was coming, and now we're told it's not in the plans. So which is it? Let's get the road straight, people. Let's figure this out so that you don't lose taxpayers, so your taxpayers don't have to die because you didn't do what you needed to do to make sure you were actually working for those taxpayers and not working for some developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this application?
Can I reiterate my question?
More, it's another public hearing, you can come on up. If you just restate your name and...
So the sentiment is the same. My question was...
Sorry, if you say your name and address.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thomas Bruff.
Yes, sir.
3036 Berry Patch Trail. My question was, and this gentleman didn't answer it, and this gentleman didn't answer it, has there been a public safety study? The answer that I heard and from the other neighborhoods, because there's multiple neighborhoods here, is that what I heard was, this is how they're going to get in the neighborhood, and this is how they're going to get out. But has there been a public safety study on the roads, just like y'all were just talking about, she was just talking about? Off of Rucker, Windrow, Old Salem, Veterans, that area right there. He didn't answer that question.
We will answer that question.
Okay. And, and then the young lady that came up a few minutes ago, we were talking about the wetlands, we're talking about retaining the water, but nobody answered the question about the flooding that occurs particularly on Windrow and over to Old Salem Road. And the other neighborhoods that are here, they know what I'm talking about. When it rains a lot, it floods the road. That's a public safety hazard. And not having the configuration right for a neighborhood like this, that's a public safety. And I didn't hear any of these gentlemen say that they've had that type of study. So like the lady said, for the taxpayers and for public safety and sleeping in bed at night that something's gotten proved that you know is safe, that needs to be done before there's any movement with this any further.
Thank you, Mr. McCraw.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, no, any, anyone else would like to speak for or against this application? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. You know, some, so we will specifically, I'll ask the question, has a public safety study been done with respects to the roads in question?
So there, there's nothing that's been a public safety study that I'm aware of. Typically, what we see is whether public infrastructure, the, the engineering group there wants to, to request a traffic impact study. There, they did not request one on this side. We've had neighboring developments in the area that have, have done them recently and didn't warrant light at Old Salem at that time. And knowing that the Windrow Road realignment there is in the future, they didn't feel it necessary to require one on this, a traffic study on this project.
But if this board chose to request that, that is our right to do so?
I believe Mr. Tully, Tully has nodded in the affirmative.
Yes, I, I believe that that would be something this board could require. Yes.
All right. And then the, the other question that Mr. Bruff brought up was the flooding. I know we talked about the wetlands. We, we were told that we can't let any more runoff exceed what would come today in a 100-year flood, but do, do we, can we address specifically the flooding of Windrow Road?
So I'm not aware of that. I will say, as, as the city's acting floodplain administrator, there are no FEMA-regulated floodplanes on this site. The city has recently had a CLOMAR accepted by FEMA for the area just south of here, but there was no floodplain in that CLOMAR north of... But there was no floodplain in that Clomar north of Old Salem Road.
And can you put that in layman's terms?
So what we did there was, because of the state's project, we basically did a study to determine flood, where the 100-year floodplain is from Veterans Drive up to Old Salem and Constantine? Is that correct, Matthew? So up to that stretch was studied because of the state's ongoing project with the widening of 109, sorry, I went to another jurisdiction there, with 99.
All right. All right. We've closed the public hearing. Any other questions either for the applicant or for staff?
If we were going to have the street department study whether it was this need for a stoplight at the intersection of Old Salem and Veterans, it looks like that's not in the city limits from what we're looking at on GIS.
There's a gap.
There's a gap.
On Veterans. It's actually county. It goes city, county, city.
Could we even...
The intersection.
Yeah, the intersection.
And what we're zoning now stops at Veterans. It doesn't cross over and get that whole intersection.
There was a prior annexation request that was in the process right now.
It's funny you mention that, Mr. Wright, because tomorrow night at city council, you'll be considering the annexation of the right-of-way of Old Salem and Veterans.
Well, fantastic. So the planning commission tonight, I'm going to ask that the street department just look at the necessity of a stoplight on Old Salem to see if it's deemed necessary. And if this project's approved, we can move impact fee money over to help pay for the stoplight.
I believe a traffic study was done on this property. There's several developments in this area. We're kind of getting them mixed up in our heads, so I apologize for that. They did do a traffic study. And what I'll also say, with a signal planned at Rucker, Windrow, the spacing to have one at Old Salem doesn't work out. Those two intersections would be too close to put two signals back to back with also the one at 99 and Veterans.
Okay. Thank you.
But to confirm a traffic study, to answer the gentleman's question, a traffic study was done on this project?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
But now we're being told that moving...
The public hearing's closed, y'all. I'm sorry.
So we're finding new information out at this time, so we should have to break.
Okay. We have to cut.
Yeah, the public hearing's closed. I mean, you want to...
At this time, the realignment of...
I'm sorry, we're working through it. Just give us a second.
At this time, the realignment of Windrow Road would be development-driven. The city did realign Rucker, so that intersection exists. If the city wants to, we can talk to our public infrastructure folks about studying that intersection to see if it warrants a signal. But any signal would need to meet all the warrants required.
Is that intersection with, is it too close to Salem to approve that?
No. That one could be signalized at Rucker, not at Windrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're saying if we, when Windrow realigns, and then you put a signal at Veterans and Old Salem, those are going to be too close together, correct?
Yes. You could not have a signal at Rucker and Old Salem.
Yeah. Okay.
And Rucker is the more traffic in.
And yeah, with Rucker connecting back out to 96, that would be the preferred location.
Priority, yeah.
Most of the traffic that we see on Old Salem, there are some developments there. This one would be, but we also see a lot of cut-through traffic as well, like avoiding the signal at Veterans and...
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions from the planning commission? All right. What are the wishes of the planning commission or any comments that you might have?
Well, it sounds like at council tomorrow night, we can discuss further the intersection of Old Salem and Veterans. Did you have any other qualms?
No, I'm just trying to figure out this, I mean, there's three intersections within what, yeah, we need to talk about it at council tomorrow, but the, but like we've said, Windrow is not necessarily affected by this development. There's no entrances from this development onto Windrow.
Correct.
This development is all empty and off of Old Salem. All right, that's all I got. Anybody else got any questions?
Well, my question, is Oveland Creek causing the flooding on Windrow? Because Oveland Creek is pretty far down from this project we're looking at. So I know there was a lot of concern about flooding, but if you pull up the map, Oveland Creek is way down the road. So that's the only creek I see in this area.
And they're saying it's not in a floodplain. It's not in a...
Right.
Just an old road. Old road. And the houses and the properties have been built up on top of the road.
You want to address that question or...
I was just going to bring up, overall creek is what was studied in that map revision. And according to what we have as best available data, it doesn't extend floodplain this far north.
Yes, Chair Halliburton, I'm a little confused on when the last traffic impact study was completed.
Do you have the date on that, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, and I apologize for misspeaking earlier. We've had two out here real close together and real close together on timeline, and they're easy to get, to get mixed up. So that traffic impact study was submitted prior to pre-application, which on this, Brian Hellme was, I think, in, okay. So the traffic study was still July 30th of this year. So it has been done recent. It would have been studied prior to school being let out in the spring.
And what does that traffic impact study tell us?
Katie, do you know details? Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know that I or Katie are the one to answer that. Public infrastructure reviews those studies.
They signed off on it as part of this approval, which is like staff recommended approval, right?
Yes. And we asked for improvements to be included in the pattern book based on the feedback we're getting from public infrastructure.
Right. I'm sure they're much smarter than myself when it comes to traffic and infrastructure right there, so that's great.
All right. Any other questions or actions, motions associated with this application?
Well, I'm very pleased with the plans. I mean, it's a good quality product. It's three and a half units per acre, which is a lot lower than what we've been seeing the last 12 months, 24 months here at this planning commission. You know my big things, handling parking, handling water runoff, and I think it's up to city council maybe tomorrow over the next few weeks to discuss. Mr. Wright says he'll bring it up to discuss maybe speeding up the timeline of that intersection. And so with that, I will make a motion to approve it, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
The motion is second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
That application is approved, and hopefully the traffic issue will be addressed at the council. The next item on our agenda is a zoning application for approximately 9.6 acres located north of Asher's Fork Drive to be rezoned from RS6 to RSA2. O'Brien Lloyd Venture is the applicant. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. So the application before you is to rezone from our RS6, 6,000-square-foot, single-family residential lot minimum to RSA2, which is residential, single-family attached, suburban townhouse type. So as far as the surrounding land uses, there's a mixture of both residential and commercial surrounding this property. Just to the north of the subject property is a part of the same parcel as the rezonance taking place on that is zoned CF or commercial French, and that fronts along New Salem Highway. Just to the east of the site is some single-family residential detached homes that are in the unincorporated county and zoned RM, medium-density residential within the county. Then to the, to the south of the property, immediately to the south on the same property is some additional RS6 zoned property. Further south than that is a continuation of Waits Creek Crossing subdivision, which is zoned RSA1 and has a mixture of two-family or single-family attached with two units and a building, and the attached product, and then single-family detached as well. And then just to the immediate west is a PCD for the creekside at Three Rivers Assisted Living and some vacant CH zoned property. So the RSA2 district permits by right both single-family detached and single-family attached townhomes, suburban type, on individual lots or through an HPR, a horizontal property regime. And it allows various types of other housing types and institutional-type uses. Our future land use plan for this location, and let me get back to the map, is identified as AUR, our auto-urban residential, which is looking for a density range between four and 12 dwelling units per acre, and is recommending anything from RS10 zoning to RS6 and then the RSA1, 2, and 3 districts, as well as PRD. The AUR designation also permits on lots larger than 4.1 acres, a mixture of both attached and detached products with, as long as certain criteria are met, and that's 20% of the overall acreage for the property is attached units, or 40% of the overall number of attached, of units is attached residential units. And then also a transition of height setbacks and requiring those that are taller, for buildings that are taller than the surrounding, single-family detached. So what the applicant has indicated to us is they expect to yield about 59 attached single-family units and 21 detached single-family units. What we did, what I did there to illustrate how this matches up with that AUR 40%, or 20% of total acreage and 40% of total number of units matching up with that caveat in the AUR is we looked at it in three different scenarios. One for the total Waits Creek Crossing development, which the total acreage, about 30% of the total acreage is attached dwelling units, about 42% of the total number of units is attached. And then you look at the units per acre is 4.7, so it's within that 4-point, or 4 to 12 range. And then we looked at just the, I looked at just the portions that were AUR designation, and that portion is 23% of the acreage and 40% of the total number of units. So it aligns a little bit better with what the AUR designation is looking for, and that comes out to 3.6 units per acre. And then we looked at just for the sections north of Asher Fork, so that RS6, and then what's being proposed to be rezoned to RS2A, and that came out to 55% of the acreage and 74-ish percent of the units being attached. And that, that density calculation still comes out to 4.6. So you can see the percentages don't match up exactly. Most of them are close, within 10% to 10% of the acreage requirement or 2% of the unit requirement, but the density is within the 4 to 12 or just under that 4 to 12. Planning commission will need to evaluate the request and determine if this deviation is appropriate when the density range is met. Staff is supportive of the rezoning request for the following reasons. The rezoning request is consistent with the future land use map designation, designation of auto-urban residential, and supported by a density of 4.6 units per acre for the portion of the development north of Asher Fork Drive, which meets the AUR recommended range. The proposed RS2A district is compatible with the surrounding residential and commercial uses and provides a logical transition between nearby single-family detached and single-family attached units with commercial to the north along New Salem Highway. The subject property is currently vacant and located within an active area of residential development, making it well-suited to provide diverse and potentially, potentially more affordable housing options that complement ongrowing growth in the New Salem corridor. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and formulate a recommendation for city council. I'm happy to answer any questions the planning commission may have. And Mr. Chip Lloyd is here, who's the applicant, and Cloud Roundtree with Huddleston Steel is also here with the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Any questions for Mr. Donovan specifically or the applicant? If not, we'll move into the public hearing. Anyone that's here would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Alan Nowasik, 2117 Berenger Lane. I had some questions about how the zoning works, but I think I understood it better this evening, listening to the prior presentations. The, the proposed zoning area, there is a portion below that to the south of it, to Asher's Fork, so nothing's been designated with that yet. Is this the developer taking a first bite at the apple to get what he wants and then come back when this is a little closer to the residents below? This property is not that big. It does, it is surrounded to the south and to the east by, by single-family. It seems that staff is recommending a deviation from the standards that would allow an RSA2 single-family connected units. And I'm assuming, or the question would be how, to what extent, how many units are connected? Across the street from where we live right now are duplex townhomes, and they're, they have tight side yards between buildings, but you do get a little bit of light and you're not just looking at a wall of two-story buildings. I am against this being rezoned. It is, I don't know if any of the board members have been through there to see the development, but if you drive through, it's pretty tight the way it is. This increases the density even tighter. I think a nice horseshoe development could be done in there with an RS6, and there would be plenty, plenty of profit for the developers. And I think when we bought there, we were told by the sales office, which is run by the developer, that that property was going to be single-family homes. And most people, when you think single-family homes, is what we were buying into. So now I understand tonight, single-family homes can mean connected, RSA1, and so forth. But I think with the size of this, and we don't know what the developer's going to come back at, at another time with the, with that swatch of land between the area request for this evening and Asher Fork Drive, I would ask that the board stay with what was proposed there, what the developer bought into, understanding when he bought it, that's what he was getting. So, and they could still have a nice product, it won't be super jammed. It's tight there now. And we knew what we were buying at that neighborhood and everything, and we have no regrets, and we're happy to live in Murphysboro. live in Murfreesboro. But at the same time, too, please scale this back just a little bit, get it more consistent with what's around it. There are beautiful, large homes to the east, across New Salem Highway is single-family homes, which you can, you can see when you look out our door. Um, but it, it's very, I think it would be very appropriate to, like I said, just scale back a little bit. Uh, I did have a couple of my neighbors ask that I, because they can't make it, um, that they're concerned too. They, they would like to keep the character and the beauty of the area consistent as to what, uh, what has already been built and established there already. Um, and, um, I just ask that this be considered in a responsible and thoughtfully decisive manner, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak for or against this application, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Um, and, um, one of the questions that, um, the gentleman asked was, I guess, the intent of, as a parcel that's not being developed, but maybe still owned by the developer. I know that's not part of this application, but it was a question that was asked.
So, uh, may have neglected to do a good job of explaining this, but this section down here is zoned RS six currently, and that's what it's going to remain. So it has the same designation as what's being requested to be rezoned, uh, and that, that will stay in place.
Okay. That's good.
Okay.
Cool. Glad you said that. I did not pick up on that.
All right. Any other questions? Brian, go ahead.
So we're rezoning to RSA two, but are you saying that their proposed mix would not still fit into that zoning, and then we have to decide later?
So, so the RS two A would permit the townhomes. Where I'm saying is, well, what I'm saying with, and I'm assuming you're talking about this calculation, Mr. Price, is that if you look, depending on how you look at the breakdown with the overall, you are close to what our future land use plan is cor, is requesting, but you are within the density. And kind of it's within, you know, if planning commission is, um, okay with just the overall density being met versus pinpointing, spot meeting each of those individual criteria, or the overall intents being met with the density.
But what are the rules? I mean, are they able to?
So if, if the, this were to get approved by a city council in the future, those percentages wouldn't prohibit the, the applicant from developing and having those that are higher. That's not, that's not something that's codified in the zoning ordinance that would require him to meet it. It is in the land use plan.
Thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. And the land use plan is an advisory document.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions? Do you have any comments that you want to make?
Planning Commissioner Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Just a little clarification on the density that we're asking for. Uh, Mr. Lloyd has been encouraged to try to create a little bit more of an affordable product. That's where we're coming from. Uh, these are going to be a little bit smaller. Um, homes, the price point will be at the upper 300s, probably hitting around 400,000. So that's kind of what motivated it. We're up against commercial to the north. We're up against a, you know, a senior living center onto the, um, west. There is a pretty decent, uh, separation due to the retention area between the single-family homes to the east, and as was mentioned, to the south is going to be the RS, RS six, so those will be single-family homes. And the folks who will buy those homes will know, you know, that these, these townhomes are there, so there won't be any mystery for them. I think that was one of the, one of the respects to the planning staff, that this would be his own first, so that that's in place. So anyone who's going to buy into those RS six homes will know that these townhomes are there.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. All right. Any other questions from council or action? Excuse me, commission, not council.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second. Have a motion as second?
Vice Chair Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. That application passes. Uh, next on our agenda, staff reports and other business. The first item, uh, under that heading is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment and relocation of sanitary sewer easement on city-owned property located along Cherry Lane. SEC is the applicant. Uh, Mr. Shackleford Broull, how are you?
I'm good. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, this mandatory referral is for an abandonment and relocation of a sanitary sewer easement owned by the city, uh, located along Cherry Lane. Uh, and this mandatory referral, we're asking, or SEC is asking for, uh, the abandonment and existing sanitary sewer easement due to a alignment issue. Um, the previous sewer easement in place was 30 feet, and based on some updated guidelines from MWRD, uh, it now requires a 40-foot easement. Um, after the abandonment and relocation of this easement, uh, SEC will, um, put the new sewer line in a way that makes sure it properly aligns. Um, the purpose of this upgrade is so the townhomes along Cherry, uh, excuse me, along Cherry Lane, um, can get future services, and there's an exhibit. Here I could show it better. It's the property to the north, right across the street from the soccer field, as shown here. So the sewer easement's going to go right along here to serve this community right across the street. If approved by council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary, included but not limited to any exhibits and legal descriptions, for the legal department to prepare, for the legal, excuse me, for the legal department to prepare the legal instruments to formally abandon the exist, existing easements and dedicate the proposed easement. The applicant will also be responsible for recording the legal instruments and including the payment of the recording fee. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion? So move subjects all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion as second.
Vice Chair Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is the In-N-Out Burger overflow queuing and park, I think this is going to be interesting, and parking. Initial and final design review and site plan review for a temporary 120-day maximum overflow queuing area, a temporary overflow parking area, and a temporary staging area on two properties, zone Commercial Highway and GDO one, located along Willow Brook Trail and Robert Rose Drive. In-N-Out Burger is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Chairman Halliburton, and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. Uh, this next item on your agenda is a request, uh, from In-N-Out Burger. Um, as you all are familiar, they have a new location in Murfreesboro that will be opening, and a part of their, their consideration is, they're aware of the enormous, um, feedback that they get from their customers, um, and that many of those customers are going to be driving from outside of Murfreesboro to come visit this location when they do open. Part of their strategic plan to minimize the, the impact onto public right-of-ways and adjacent properties is to set up lots, um, like you're seeing before you here today. These lots are intended to soften that impact, uh, and also to get some vehicles off of the streets that, that might generally be, um, causing additional congestion. Um, what you're seeing here, well, if I could learn how to use this lectern, it would be helpful. Uh, this first lot area here is part of the Clary Park Development, um, located just to the west of the In-N-Out Burger location. Uh, Lot Two is more to the northeast and is actually a part of the North Church, uh, commercial subdivision. Um, both of these lots are going to be set up to where they are fairly flexible, where they can, uh, move traffic control around for either staging for drive-through customers, or flex to provide additional parking areas for those customers that wish to actually go to the store, um, and, you know, order their food in, in person. Um, this is a little different than what we're used to seeing, um, because these are temporary lots. Uh, initially, we have plans for this to be in place for 120 days with an additional 60 days that can be requested uh, from our planning director, Mr. Ben Newman, uh, and he would be able to authorize that, that additional time period. Um, once this use is, is ended, uh, these lots will be removed, asphalt-based material will be removed from those properties, and they will be restored. Um, I'm available tonight if you have any questions, and we also have, um, our guest, Mr. Jeff, Jeff Wright with us from In-N-Out Burger, uh, who is also very well versed on the project, will be able to answer questions as well.
Mr. Barbie, would you mind paging down a couple of pages?
Is there one that shows the year?
Go, go one more. There you go.
This is the, the staging for the first lot area. Um, as you can see, it is, uh, very efficiently, um, shown. That is the, the maximum, uh, possible usage, and then this is the same type of dis, um, display for the second lot area as well. Um, and again, understand these are maximum capacity, uh, representations, uh, that are being shown on these diagrams.
I think this is great. My eight-year-old son literally asks me every single day when he can go get a double-double at In-N-Out, so, uh, anything that can make this happen faster, I'm all for. Sub, uh, I approve subject, or make a motion subject to all staff comments.
Second.
That's good.
So, all right, let's.
Vice Chair Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. I'd just make the comment, I, I'd like to applaud the applicant and, and the staff. I, I've never seen anything like this. I wish I had a business that I had to have consistent, or I have to have overflow parking for queuing. Um, but, um, uh, it's a great problem to have, but I'm glad we're trying to address it. So, anyway, moving on to the next item, uh, which is consider naming the new Cherry Lane extension west of, uh, I-40 to Stones Battle Parkway. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Chairman Halliburton. Um, the Cherry Lane Extension, as it's been called, as you know, as many of you are familiar with this project, will be from its existing, uh, terminus somewhere to the east of Leanna Road, and it will traverse southward, excuse me, southwesterly toward, uh, toward I-40, intersect with I-40, and then onto Broad Street, and then eventually to I-24. Um, the segments of this roadway that are going to be east of I-40, uh, will be in the phases that will occur first. Um, we would anticipate that the, um, sections west of I-40 would be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to 10 years to, to begin construction on those areas. So during that interim time period, there will be a segment of, of this roadway that will be kind of hanging out there, disconnected from the rest of, from the rest of the roadway. Um, and that would be the segment that would be in the Mason Brook subdivision. Mason Brook, um, the preliminary plat was approved several years ago, and the final plat was approved by the planning commission back in July. And so, um, the situation that we would have if this, um, if this were to be named Cherry Lane, is that you would have one disconnected segment of Cherry Lane for an indeterminate period of time, minimum eight to 10 years before it would be connected to the remainder of Cherry Lane, possibly longer. Um, I would, I would liken that to the existing situation with West Northfield Boulevard, where the Vanderbilt Clinic is located, just adjacent to Thompson Lane. Um, that will be West Northfield Boulevard, and it'll be disconnected from the rest of West Northfield Boulevard for, um, an indeter, indeterminate period of time. So we're trying to avoid that, and we determined that, that similar to the Medical Center Parkway Fortress Boulevard, um, name change at I-24, this would be a similar situation where Cherry Lane, uh, it would be appropriate to rename it at the I-40 interchange, so that it would have a different street name west of I-40, and that, um, that would enable this, the segment of the roadway that has been constructed through the Mason Brook subdivision to exist separate from Cherry Lane without there being any confusion, um, regarding it being called Cherry Lane, but being several miles away from the existing Cherry Lane. So, um, the city manager's office, uh, in conjunction with, um, the city council, Mr. Gore polled our city council members to, um, come up with a consensus on a, um, on a street name, um, and the, kind of the, uh, I don't want to say urgency, but the, the time-sensitive nature of this, uh, is with respect to the fact that the Mason Brook development, um, they are very close to recording their subdivision plat, and they need a street name for, for that, um, for that segment of the roadway that is going to be traversing east-west through their development. And, um, so the planning commission, according to our subdivision regulation, has, has final authority over street naming within the city limits of Murfreesboro. And so, uh, I bring to you the recommendation tonight to name, um, uh, the Cherry Lane Extension to Stones Battle Parkway, uh, west of I-40, and that would allow the developers of Mason Brook to use that street name, um, in their, in their development and record their, their final plat. Um, so we would ask you to consider that street name, um, and if you so choose to, uh, to vote to approve it at tonight's meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Any discussion or motion?
Was it your idea, Matthew?
No one's taking credit for this name.
Blomley Parkway?
Uh, that would get misspelled all the time. No, we, uh, so, um, uh, it was, uh, we, we brainstormed dozens of, of road names, and, you know, just like private developers, we have to run those road names through E-911, and so, um, you know, I would work with Mr. Gore to come up with some street names, variations of different street names, and I think, I think, uh, Mr. Gore polled the city council members for suggestions, and so we ran all of those through E-911, you know, a number of them got.
Yeah, I want to see the ballot to see which council members voted for this. No, I'm just kidding. I, I, I'll make a motion subject to all staff comments.
Second.
To approve it.
To approve it.
Vice Chair Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. Any other business, Matthew? Yes, sir. All right. We adjourn.